Welcome back to the Housing Advocate, the podcast of the Southern Utah Home Builders Association. I'm Stacy Young and today I am super excited to be joined by a couple of my friends, Danielle Larkin and Jordan Wall. And they both have really long and amazing CVs, so I'll keep the introductions kind of short. Danielle is a city council member in St. George's City, among many other things. And Jordan is a really accomplished builder, member of SUBA and a member of our Board of Directors. And today we get to talk about, one of the topics that I know is really near and dear to all three of our hearts, which is the opportunity to open up additional channels for homes. So I was looking at this stat the other day. We have in Washington County around 15 master plan communities that are 1,000 plus homes each. And so we have the suburbs kind of covered. You know, we've got, we've got the ability to deliver homes in those contexts. All of those projects are kind of on the periphery of our existing urban footprint. And so, you know, at SUBA, we're in all of the above outfit when it comes to housing. So we're glad that we have those projects and we're also happy to see that those projects have a lot more housing choice than they would have, you know, eight or 10 years ago. There are a lot more kind of small lots and townhomes and so forth. And we're also seeing a little bit more complete communities there, you know, that have some commercial components and civic uses as well. So that's all good, but you know, I know all three of us feel like there's also another really important opportunity that we're kind of missing today, which is to allow for more home building and development within our existing urban footprint. So sometimes called infill or redevelopment or brownfield development. And to this point, we haven't done a whole lot of that. And I think I know all three of us believe that there's a lot, lot of opportunity for that. So that's broadly the conversation I want to have with you guys today. And then we'll get into a little bit of a new initiative that SUBA is launching this, this coming parade year that is meant to showcase some opportunities in that direction. But generally, that's what we want to talk about. So first of all, thanks again, guys, for coming in and doing this. And Danielle, maybe start with you. I mean, I don't really want to give you a narrow question. I want to kind of just let you talk about this issue. You know a ton about it, super informed about it, super passionate and a great leader and advocate for this stuff. I just want to hear your thoughts about it, just very open ended to start with.
Okay. A few things that come to mind right off the bat. I first met Jordan through you Stacy, because I had been living in Little Valley, raising my kids on an acre. And my kids were grown and I really wanted to move to a smaller space, a space that was closer to walkable and bikeable areas where my husband and I are in our 50s. We're at an age where we're like, you know, we could size down now. We could really like put the car in the garage and enjoy more time, you know, going to the grocery store on foot instead of driving everywhere. And so we had this idea and it took us a long time. You can speak to this too, because we've both built homes downtown. It took us a long time, first of all, just to find a spot where we could legally build what we wanted to build, because we wanted to build a home downtown and we also wanted to build an accessory dwelling unit. At the time when we very first started looking, it was like 2019. And the city wasn't even allowing accessory dwelling units to be built. So that's one major stride that we've made in St. George is the allowance of accessory dwelling units. The state's really pushing that even more now. But you know, fast forward to, we finally found a property that we could purchase, that we thought we could build on, and the city started allowing accessory dwelling units to be built. And then it was tricky to find a builder who was willing to build something creative, because at the time, most builders just weren't doing that. And so people that I would approach about it, they just didn't have the vision of what that would look like or how that would work. So I, you and I met and we started having these conversations and then you introduced me to Jordan. And so that's how the relationship between the three of us has developed over time and our passion for, really in my mind, what it is, is allowing people to build what they want and need to build. If we really dumb it down to like, what are we trying to accomplish? We're not trying to force anything.
Right.
It's just allowing people to have their best quality of life and build the thing that would work best for them and their family and their stage of life. So we ended up building downtown. That conversation has continued as I've been on city council. And just this past week, we actually had a work meeting talking, I don't know if you guys even know this, but we had a work meeting talking about extending ADUs, the footprint that's allowed. Because right now we have this tight footprint and a lot of restrictions that for a lot of building lots don't actually make sense. So when we're tailing you, you can't build an accessory dwelling unit that's over 800 square feet. What's our reason why? And so the discussion was once again around like, why do we have these codes? Is it for safety or is it just because we've always had it and we're not sure? And I think that the conversation was really productive with the city council this last week, because it was like, what can we allow? Whatever we can allow that allows people to build as creatively as possible and build for their need is what we should be doing. And so we ended that conversation with the city council agreeing that we need to expand the availability of, you know, more creativity in the ADU space. So that's just one conversation in regards to what can be done in spaces that have already been built, like a downtown, spaces that already have infrastructure, spaces that have extra land that's not being used and isn't being utilized. And we're basically blocking people from that because we have such a single family, single property, you know, home building mentality. You can put one house on one property and it needs to look like one nuclear family. How do we get beyond that thinking and allow people to build for what they actually have?
Yeah. Now, a lot of really good stuff there. I think, you know, I think one thing we're seeing with that, one thing I hear when you relay that conversation is, you know, we talked about this a little bit early on as St. George was just starting to adopt the ADU thing, looking at other places that were a little bit further along that path and looking at what happened there. And I think the same thing has happened here, which is that initially there's a little bit of resistance and concern that this is going to sort of be this radical change to a neighborhood. And then five or six years on, people get really comfortable with it and they see that it doesn't, you know, it's not a bad thing. It's a good thing. And like you said, once people start experiencing it for themselves, especially in being able to tailor their, their housing for their needs and preferences, it starts to unlock some of those, some of those prior conceptions. I think the other thing that I picked up on was that to sort of the choicing, I was looking at our data the other day for something else. Only 23% of Washington County households are nuclear families. So with two parents and kids at home. So that means three quarters of our households are either single people, completely living alone, couples without kids or single parents. That's, that's actually the majority by a lot. And so if you think about their housing needs and how that, how they are alike or different from the way we, we do our land use and especially our housing, there's obviously a mismatch there that, that creates all sorts of downstream negative things. Yeah. And like you said, Jordan, Jordan built both of our homes downtown. My, my process was similar to yours. It was a long, it took a good, long while before I found a suitable spot. And it took a little bit of work with our, our other mutual friend, John Willis, who was the community development director at the time to do just a little bit of code cleanup to make what I did there feasible. And then was really happy to get linked up with Jordan and have him build, build my house. So Jordan, maybe start with, I'd be curious to hear at kind of a high level, what the, kind of a comparison, because you build all over, you know, you, you build in these infill settings and it's a, and it's a labor of love. But kind of talk about how it's the same or different, easier, harder, et cetera.
Yeah. So I, I first started off in doing like multifamily type products. And then I was doing high-end custom homes on big lots and everything like that. And I've always just loved the downtown area, the urban style living and everything like that. So when the RCC got created and kind of they loosen the reins, I want to say a little bit, as far as like what we can do and kind of you guys, both of your homes, I think are just great examples of kind of being, letting the private sector kind of show what we need to do in downtown areas. You know, we got, we, I did your house was one of the first RCC, the first RCC type home. And then built the one next door to you. And then yours was shortly after that. And yes, it's very much like a labor of love, like this too. And not that it's, it's harder in, in different ways, but it's more rewarding in different ways as well. You know, we have, there's some architectural review stuff that you have to do for the RCC as far as like, and a lot of downtown lots especially are really skinny and long. And one of the city's requirements is that they don't want the whole front of your house to look like a garage, but you also have to have a garage. So there's, to get a nice home, you gotta get creative. Kind of we got, we brought creative with both of your houses as far as the way they're not traditional, you know, house garage to the left or to the right. Yours is detached and in the back, yours is detached and off to the side, which I love. Personally, I love to look at a home that doesn't look like it's just a garage. So there's the, that, I mean, as far as like approaches and things like that, where it's not just we come in and it's a new subdivision and the utilities are stubbed into the law and everything's good. Most of the time it's like, where are the utilities on this thing? And how old are they and what kind of shape are they in?
Where are all the easements and?
Yeah. You would be amazed when we, I mean, we're doing the parade house right now in downtown. And the things that you will uncover when you start doing this.
It's anthropological research.
Yeah. Like I feel like we should call, you know, an archaeologist and have them on site. The things that we pull up at, at all different depths. And even it's funny, like calling some of the department heads and being like, we've found this like cast line. What is this? And they're like, I have no idea. Like this is probably the person that built this in, you know, 1920 or 1930, just put this line in and it's probably for their furnace, like gas furnace stuff and things like that. So there's the challenges in it like that, obviously. But then there's a lot of perks into it as far as like, there is some affordability stuff that's with that. Like if we buy an old house and it's been demoed or the demo's not crazy, then you know, we do have some refund options for impact fees, things like that. And then obviously the RCC zone is, is awesome. I, you were one of the spearhead on that as far as like setbacks and things like that. We go out and outside of urban development and everything is huge setbacks. Like crazy to me that we have 25 foot front yard setbacks like, and I don't know about you guys, but I don't see a whole lot of people hanging out in their front yards. Very, very little. So RCC is, you know, in some cases 10 feet, depending on if we follow all their guidelines and things like that, which is great. Our streets are built for horse and wagon, literally. So they're in downtown, we have really big streets compared to, you know, older cities on the east coast or even some on the, on the west coast where they're small. So there's, there's a lot of really good things that we can do affordability wise in downtown or different design and things like that, that we, we, we can't do on the outskirts. And it wouldn't really make sense to do on, you know, planned development kind of stuff. But that's what's nice about the downtown thing. And I think there's some more things that we can do, like you touched on making the ADUs bigger would be massive, never quite understood why we couldn't, but would be a great add-on. There's some alleyway ordinance that you and I have talked about that if we could get changed, would, would definitely be a game changer as far as downtown development. But the thing that I like is that St. George is kind of spearheading this for Washington City. And I'm starting to see some other cities kind of get into that, like see like, oh, and it's like we were talking before, if they can see it or if they can live it, then, but no one wants to be the test dummy. No one wants to have it done and then it's a massive failure. But St. George, I think is doing a great job about being proactive about this. I think, and not to rag on any other cities, but I think they're one of the, one of the few that's really trying to be proactive about it. And also because St. George has the most downtown urban things. Like we're starting to get things, we're getting restaurants, we're getting, you know, grocery stores, little stores, things that make it so it's more of an urban type living other than like, you know, some cities don't have that yet. But that's what drives the commercial side, residential first, commercial second. And I think St. George is getting really caught up on the commercial side. Now it's time to start putting rooftops down here and making it so it is urban type living.
Yeah. We have, you said, we've got the really wide streets and the really big pioneer, really big pioneer blocks. And if we don't figure out some sort of alley or other sort of drive approach, it's really hard to unlock those inner blocks where we have a ton of underutilized or unutilized land. And it would be really nice to permit more of kind of the missing middle. So it kind of starts with ADUs and ends with sort of a small scale multifamily. You guys have heard that term. So it's duplexes, fourplexes, cottage courts, things like that. And that, so there's a whole host of other housing typologies would be really healthy to add to our, our menu, especially in downtown areas. For example, I look at the, the folks living next to me now and it's an, it's a detached, very small detached home and a, and an ADU over the garage and back. And for their, just kind of watching how they live, what would really suit them better is just a duplex. You know, that, that would just suit them better, just the way the two are living, because then they would both have furniture on the street. It would just, you know, they would kind of have their own little bit of privacy in terms of the backyard as opposed to that being a little bit of a, of a, of a, it's not a conflict point, because it's, it's just not that big of a deal. But they would have just that little bit of additional kind of individual privacy. So, so there are a lot of instances where a duplex makes more sense than an ADU or maybe even a fourplex in some cases. So I think the individual choice is a big part of it. But Danielle, I think there's also this whole other category that is also kind of hard to, to make really obvious. And that is, you know, some of the biggest public policy issues that we face locally, how the, how that kind of intersects with this housing conversation. So from your perspective as a, as a leader and as an elected leader to boot, what's, what's your perspective on kind of what are our biggest public policy challenges? And how does housing and how we do housing kind of interact with those?
When you were just talking about the duplexes, I was thinking about how that word, that word duplex, when we were having the ADU conversation the other day, that word kept coming up as this trigger word. And it was being used as, but what we don't want to see is, and they kept using the word duplex. And I finally said, help me understand what the discriminatory feeling is toward duplex. You've just got two connected homes. Why is that problematic? Why are you okay with it being called a townhome? You're okay with it being called a condo? Like you're okay with all these words that are other types of connected homes? But then when it's called a duplex or a triplex or a fourplex, then it's bad. So as far as policy and public perception go, I think we do have a challenge with words. It's one of our biggest issues. You say the word density and people just lose their minds because you're talking about, they start saying, oh, you're going to build a 21 story, you know, straight into the sky, apartment complex that is going to bring all sort of graft and crime. And so I do think that we have a challenge when it comes to language and when it comes to fear. People are just afraid of change and rightly so, I think. I mean, people have seen where change has, you know, they see bad changes happen. They see changes that are not well thought through. They develop a fear response. And then after that, anything that's change is bad. So in my perception, you know, for instance, water, we have, we live in the desert. We built an entire city in a desert. We are going to have to constantly be working diligently to figure out how do we share water in this space? We'll have years of plenty and years of little. And we're always going to have to understand how to balance that in our community. It's going to be challenging and it's going to be, in my perception, something people always want to talk about, you know, we want it to be like it used to be. Well, how it used to be when the Mormon pioneers came or when the Native Americans were here alone before them, it was all about community and sharing, because they knew they were in the desert. When the Mormon pioneers came down, they would put you in jail for three days if you wasted water.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. I read that in that Washington County history book that was, that's widely distributed. But point being, we're always going to have to be a community that works together for people to be able to thrive here. So when it comes to public opinion and then also, you know, what, what are we doing at the city? Like what codes follow that public opinion? What, what are we doing to make sure that everybody can live here peaceably? We're going to have to embrace like, how do we work together to use the land that we have, to use the water that we have? And so when we talk about infill, that's really talking about how do we in an intelligent way use the infrastructure, the land, the water that we currently have and allow people to continue to live here? And some people have the idea that we should shut the door. I get emails every single day about that. We could do that. I think it's the worst decision we could ever make, because then our housing prices go immediately through the roof, which they're already insanely expensive. We become an enclave for the wealthy. We become, we have terrible traffic issues because everybody who needs services, the services come from outside, because nobody who works for me and does plumbing can afford to live here. Nobody who works for you, Jordan, can afford to live here. So they've got to live three hours out and drive in. I mean, we all know what that pattern looks like, because we've seen it in other metropolitan areas. But our, like as elected officials, we need to be forward thinking, how do we allow people to live here in ways that match their income and that match the quality of life that they would like to have? So that's where this discussion of infill. And when you were talking earlier, Jordan, about, you know, it doesn't really make sense RCC like out in the suburbs. I hope eventually it will, right? Like that's, that's the now discussion, but we have a predominant religion here that has a lot of kids. So just our in-growth, just our growth of our own families that are here is going to make it so that if people want to continue to live here and we want to continue to expand our families and our lifestyles here, we have to be continually looking at, you know, how will the suburbs be able to? I've got a, I, I lived on a house on one acre in Little Valley. How could that become a multifamily? How could my parents and maybe some of my kids live in that same space? Because that's the land we own. How does that make sense for, you know, multi-generational living? And I think that the RCC is kind of an experiment and that will hopefully over time have lots of small pockets that are doing the same thing, that are basically creating small villages all over Southern Utah, if we want to continue the lifestyle that we have now. If we don't, we can do what other communities have done and we shut the door.
Turn into Jackson, Wyoming.
And we turn into Jackson, Wyoming. And that would be heartbreaking to me. It's insanely exclusive and it would be a completely different, you know, demographic and lifestyle here. I would be very heartbroken. But if, if the voters demand it, to your point Stacy, like I'm, I'm an elected official right now who's saying this, if the voters hate that, they're going to start electing people who say, close the door. And we could see that, but I think it would be absolutely devastating for our economy.
Well, yeah. And I don't think people realize, I mean, it's an easy slogan to say like, close the door, let the locals who live here live here. And it's like, okay, if we do that, our housing prices are going to go insane. And you know, you're a fifth generation St. George person or, you know, Southern Utah. And then you get an offer on your house that is outrageous, because there's no other building permits, nothing else getting built. Like we're, no one, and within two generations, no one that's living here, it's going to turn into a Jackson, Wyoming. They weren't, they're not from here. They don't have ties here. They just have the money to buy here. So it's like, really careful what you wish for, because that's, I have a good friend who was a developer in Jackson and the outskirts of it. And I was talking to him just the other day and he was just like, yeah, like median house pricing, like for a very, very basic, almost like townhomes starts at a million dollars.
Yeah.
And it's like, if we, I mean, basic economics, like supply and demand. And how can we most effectively get more supply out there, which will lessen the demand, which will, I mean, you guys know, will make pricing go, pricing go down. But like one thing, and this was years ago, back when you were on planning commission, one of the first developments I did was some townhomes over off of Dixie Drive. And it was next to a senior living community. So they, the neighbors showed up in droves. Yes, showed up in droves and change, right? Like I get, they, they've worked their entire life to have this home that they live in now. And change scared them, like that's just what it was. And they were coming in, kind of saying some pretty outlandish things about like just people, what, what kind of demographic lives in a townhome? I mean, like, and you had finally had like a belly full and you were just like, listen, like the best, and it's stuck with me and this has been years ago, like the best community is an integrated community. Like you want your grandkids to be next door to you or do you not? Because like, how many of you have lived in a townhome or something similar to this before you have your nice home in this gated senior community? And you know, none of them wanted to raise their hand, but they raised their hand and you were, it was great. And I, it stuck with me like that is, the best community is an integrated community. Like where we're building the parade right now, I mean, we're building a parade home like that has a stigma behind it, you know, that these are very fancy, nice homes. Literally right next door to it is a fourplex. And it's like for me, I've had many people come up to me and they're just like, are you worried about that? Like, are you worried that you're going to be able to sell this? And I'm like, no, because I know the, I know the type of people who want to buy this product. They're people like you. I mean, you guys are both professionals, like.
It's a feature. I, I, yeah. I like it. It just is a more interesting neighborhood to me. Yeah. And it's, yeah, I live, a lot of the homes around me are not, not attractive. They're not super nice, but I still really like the neighborhood. You know, another thing Danielle's really good at talking about, which is kind of on that, as what we're touching on here too, is that communities are not static. So whether you, no matter what you say about permits or what policy you adopt around that or what attitude you adopt around change, you can't stop change. Communities are not static. And so, and in this country, we don't, you know, unlike China, we don't have an internal passport system that determines, you know, what city you can live in and all of that sort of thing. And so until, until something else is some other completely different method of arranging how people get to decide where to live is, our best response, I think, is to try to accommodate, accommodate the need. And you're completely right about the, the, the language part of this. I mean, you'll remember at least one hearing, I think this is in your planning commission area as well. I think you'll remember at least one hearing where high density, the high density term was being applied to half acre lots.
Yes.
I've had, I've had a.
So it's relative.
It's still happening. It's crazy.
We had 15,000 square foot lots trying to get a zone change in a city. And one of the city council members said, for 15,000 square foot lots, that we do not want low income housing. And at that point, I just like, I just, I tabled the, tabled it and just walked out and was like, it's just, I can't. And we have to educate, I guess, even at the highest levels. It's not even the people, it's some of these people in office. It's like, let's really get down to the brass tacks of what, you know, low income housing and high density really is outside of our scope. Because high density to me is not what people around here think what high density is.
Well, and part, part of the point to my story is it's, it's always going to be relative. You know, you'll also hear stories about people that are living in a story building that are upset about the 12 story building that's being proposed next year. So it's always going to be relative. To me, the only place where the density sort of term even becomes interesting is if you are thinking about, okay, if we arrange this, this way, if we do quarter acre lots, we're going to get, you know, around 10 people per acre. You know, that's going to be a little over three, three homes on that acre. We'll call it, we'll round up and call it three people per home. So you're going to be at around 10. On the other hand, if you build an apartment building, you know, if it's a standard five over one, you know, that you see all over the country, those are typically going to be 150 or so people. And so you talk about how much water, the relative water use between those two land use arrangements. You talk about the ability to now have a walkable neighborhood, because you now have a built-in patronage for commercial, for restaurants, et cetera. All of a sudden, everything doesn't have to be. All of a sudden, everything doesn't have to be spread out. All of a sudden, you don't need a car as much. So, so you, you, that's the one. Time when I'm willing to talk about in terms of density because you can see how just the math being applied to these. You know, that is kind of the driver, the the of of our resource use, whether it's traffic or water or anything else. And that's the one time I think it's somewhat useful cuz maybe can at least to some segment of the people, they can kind of at least start to think about, oh, yeah. The way we arrange our, our land use is gonna have lots of impact on traffic and water use and affordability and all the rest of it. So um.
Part of the problem though, Stacy, when you're talking about that is you're sharing actual facts with us right now. But what people, people just have this gut reaction to these types of developments and their gut reaction is almost always incorrect. In the sense of it doesn't match the facts. So you build a five over one and the, what they say is, this is going to make the traffic horrendous. Instead of being able to realize like actually that five over one reduces traffic downtown because people can. Are in a space where they can walk, they can leave their car parked or not have a car at all. Like it creates these opportunities. To reduce traffic, but the gut reaction is always, this is going to be terrible. And for some reason, traffic, I think it's just because we live in the West and we do, we did start out building a fairly car centric. Space. So people's mindset is always around, how am I going to drive there? How am I, how am I in a park in front of the space, right? So they want charming downtown shops. So I'll hear these counter arguments. We want downtown to be charming. We want a bunch of boutiques and shops and restaurants and we want things open late. Oh, also, I wanna be able to park right in front of the thing that I want to go to. And so educating on how those two things are counterintuitive and how they cancel each other out. Your charming street was just canceled by everybody wants to park in front of their place that they're going. It's just an education thing, I believe. And I feel really like the one way that I've noticed that people. Grasp it is through story. So I sometimes will share with people like, tell me where you travel. Because where they travel gives you a lot of insight into what they love. And it's like, oh, I just, I, I always, if I can, I go to Europe because I love the small shops and I love the walkability. We just, you know, we walk everywhere. It's amazing. And then I'll say, well, that, isn't that what you want for the place that you live too? And that doesn't always compute. That if we don't have that, and and also the fact that if we don't have that, it negatively affects our economy. Like at the end of the day, really, if you look at like the infrastructure that we're building as a city, like, why are we all willing to pitch in? And build infrastructure that helps each other? It's really because we wanna build wealth and we wanna build wealth because we wanna have a great quality of life. Because we want to spend time with our families and we wanna enjoy the outdoors and we have all these personal reasons. So why do these things matter? We're having this conversation with Sun River right now because they are fearful of the commercial, every single thing that's coming into their commercial area. And I'm not trying to mock them in any way. I just am sharing this because we get a lot of fearful emails. It's bringing crime. It's bring, it's going to destroy our community. In the same breath, they have been begging, we need commercial out here. So helping them to understand your commercial can't actually stay open. That giant Smiths that was just built out there can't stay open if they don't have enough people coming in the door. And there won't be enough people coming in the door if there isn't a viable commercial space and enough humans living out there. Enough bodies moving through that space every single day to be able to keep those shops open. So helping people to understand the, the difference, you know, between like you're, you're fighting the thing that you want. How do we come together to make those things work? That's to me the trick.
Yeah, and like you said, I think educating people and how we do that is by almost like showcasing them and and. Like you said, having those conversations. I mean, I had like one thing I love about PDs and like what Desert Color's done is. They have done a lot of, like I have a friend that lives in one of those detached, I call them like a detached townhome, right? Where they have a really small front setback, you can't park in front of the street, everything like that. And I'm like, it's so close to being in my idea, like a perfect thing for downtown. But downtown will work even better because then they don't have to pay an HOA fee and they don't have to have all these crazy amenities like. People can use the amenities that, the children's museum, the Vernon Worthen Park, the rec center. And it's, and it's little to no cost to them. Um, or even like the Suntran and stuff like that, like. People can use these things and get rid of this, this crazy expensive and HOA or and and that's really for me like where. The more density works in downtown is because they have these things to do and. Like, growing up, when I was a kid, my mom would always just say like, what keeps you out of trouble is keeping you busy. And if we have these amenities and these things for people to use that are little to no cost, like. That's what keeps in my mind, like the crime rate down and the cost down is that people, it it's a community feel like. There, we all use this park, so we're all gonna look out for this park.
Right. And it's not just in your mind, Jordan, by the way, there's data to back it up. There is.
Yeah, and 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 that's why I think we're real passionate about the down, the downtown area is because. We do have some awesome boutiquey shops and we see a lot of them like struggle. And a lot of it's because people don't want to, they can't park in front of Pica Rica all the time. And not that Pica Rica is struggling or anything, but they can't park in front of it every single time. I've many times like I've told people, hey, let's go to lunch. You know, in one of the restaurants and main street, ah, those are never parking, like, I have to park. You know, over off of Tabernacle and I'm like, and walk five hundred yards, like. But if we can build a community where that starts just to kind of become the norm, I, I, I really think that's something that. Needs to happen um and get that walkable community and amenities and things like that that. Little to no cost.
One of the most convincing demonstrations I've ever seen is by Urban Three. Minnakozy? Joe, Joe Minnakozy. And he shows a Walmart and you park. And then he shows kind of like the distances, like you park at Walmart and then you walk in and you do your shopping and then you come back out. And then he shows, you know, you parking in like a parking garage downtown and then walking to the shops. And you walk less from the parking garage to get to all the shops downtown than you do like parking in the Walmart parking lot and then having to go clear to the back of the store. Point only being that, you know, we, we've traded. The, the support of these local, local shops for the support of these big box shops. And what are we, what's the trade off? And sometimes when the statement is, well, it's parking, it just doesn't make sense. You know, and then he also goes into the amount of money the city makes off these small shops as opposed to. And the amount of land that's being used for that giant parking lot at Walmart. And like what the income is for the city and taxes as opposed to these downtown shops. And it's pretty mind, mind blowing.
Crazy. Yeah, and and he normalizes it so that it's on a per acre basis. So he's comparing apples to apples. And, and yeah, without fail, your kind of traditional development pattern, especially in a mixed use setting. Is by far the most fiscally potent part of your city. So that's the other side of it too. So we talked, we've already talked about water, affordability. Traffic. The other part of it is just even your fiscal health as a, as a city. You know this super well, the, the pattern that we develop on today. I, I don't know how the few, and we can get there today because we're still growing. Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't pencil long.
No, it does not. And we have this conversation every year at budget season because we haven't raised the tax rate since nineteen eighty seven. But we're borrowing from Peter to PayPal every single year because we're a growing city. So. Because we're building in a way like sprawl building costs a city money.
And once the, once the music stops, you know, I I use the analogy of Detroit. If you'd gone to Detroit in the mid sixties and told them that they were. They were ever gonna be a city that would struggle, they would not believe you. That was one of the richest cities in the world at that point. And thriving city and every, everything has a beginning, middle and end. At some point, the growth will slow. And and probably stop in Washington County. I don't know why, I don't know when, but at some point it will. And at, and at that point. It's baked in and you no longer have, you know, uh, you know, a, a person coming in the door that can kind of pay for the mistakes. That were made, you know, generations ago. And and you're exactly right. We'll add. The Urban Three, they've got a bunch of really cool case studies. We'll, we'll uh put that link in the show notes cuz it's, it is really eye, eye opening. And I think he has a couple of his, his standard kind of hour long keynote that's, it'll, yeah, it's. Pretty transformative in terms of how you see kind of um a city in terms of that. Interesting too, how he landed on it was he, he was uh, the, the group he was working for originally, Joe Minnakozy was. Was trying to do some redevelopment stuff in Asheville, North Carolina. And one of the things they were running up against was that, that lack of understanding about. What type of development is more productive versus less. And so they just went through the exercise of showing. You know, doing a case study of, here's what the, here's what the mall on the edge of town per acre, that's their potency. Here's our. Five story mixed use building and it was, and it's multiples more productive, the, 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 the mixed use stuff. But yeah, anyway, that's a, that's a whole tangent. We could talk about that alone for another hour.
Well, and the question is, I guess, like, edging, you know, we, we talked a lot, I think, about like educating the people, right? Like the people come to the meetings when they see, they get the letter in the mail for a zone change or anything different around them and. I've been in those meetings, you've been in those meetings, you're in those meetings. And, you know, they come with their pitchforks and their flames and everything and you can kind of see how it changes the mood in the room and. You know, naturally, I think as humans, we wanna make other humans happy. But how, I think there's a lot of educating that needs to be done to like elected officials as well. There's a lot of people that run on, I don't want change and they have a, they have a catchy slogan. They get elected and I don't think people, they basically get elected on a slogan, right? Like, no change, no change. We're gonna keep it the way our grandparents had it. We're gonna take care of the families that have been here for generations and I don't think people realize the harm that causes, but. My, that's, that's a, that's a thing I have, especially working in more smaller cities as well, not necessarily as much the bigger cities around here. But educating those elected officials on the, the economic burden that that puts on people and like. No matter what, we're going to have growth. Like if you've, one of my favorite, like, comebacks to anyone that wants to fight growth on. Have, you know, via online, Facebook, word of mouth, or, you know, people in those city meetings is like, well, did you have kids? And most of them are like, yeah, I have four or five of them and here's a picture of my grandkids. I'm like, you're the problem with growth. Like, then you're the one that put into this. And I think it kind of is like.
We're all growth, we're all traffic, yeah.
Yeah, and it's like, growth is going to happen. If it doesn't, that's when cities die. Or two, that's when we get, that is when we get bad growth. That's when it becomes such a problem. It's like, okay, we just need to build a thirty story. Horrible planned development just so people aren't homeless. Then that's when we cram too many people in and. It's all in one area focused on like, this is where the demographic for lower incomes all in this area and that's when. When crime happens, that's when all these things happen. But that's, that's the struggle I have is educating some of these. Really elected officials as far as like, why do you think this way? And it li- literally is just the most basic of like, well, I pretty much want people to have what I have. Or I don't want my city to change. I want that. I want everyone to, uh, the only affordable housing I want is I want them to have a one thousand square foot house on a one acre lot. Well, that doesn't, that doesn't move it a whole, move the needle a whole lot, but.
Yeah, the, wait, I can't remember what Urbanist put it this way, but he said it's, it's, it's a bit like. Um, solving a famine by mandating that everyone eat two thousand calories a day. Like it's just, it's not that, it's just that's, you need more food. It doesn't make sense just to say you have to consume two thousand calories a day if you don't. If you, you don't have it. So maybe to kind of shift a little bit, it kind of goes along the lines of what Jordan's bringing up here. So one thing, Suba, this, this is, this topic, this. You know, a lot of our policy work is focused on this area. We don't really have to do much policy work to, to get. Large expensive homes approved.
How many people are fighting that?
People don't fight that in the same way. And I think that may be some of the perception too about what we build. I think because the controversial items, the, the things that really. Get attention are the smaller lots, the attached homes. I think there may be a perception that. You know, that's all we build. Um, and then people go to the parade and think all we build are multimillion dollar homes and the, and the truth is kind of neither of those things. We, we, you know, we, we try to serve the whole market as best we can, but certainly there's, there are a number of incentives and, and so on that. That steer things in different directions. But one thing is, Suba, we've been talking about for a few years now is, is. How could, we've got this amazing platform in the Parade of Homes. We get huge, huge turnouts to those every year. And, you know, we, we, we've been contemplating whether there was a way to, to use that platform to showcase some other alternative stuff. And it's a tricky process because um the parade is very successful on the, on the basis that it is um built. And, and so there's, there's always nervousness around tampering with that. But what we landed on uh this year and partly was uh, the kismet of having Jordan be the. The first alternate on the parade list and knowing that he was, he had the ability to do a, an infill house was. It kind of sparked a conversation about could, could we, would it make sense to create a parade slot that's. That is awarded in a different fashion than the rest of them. So most of the parade slots are awarded um through sort of competition over. Your activity in the association. So uh participation on committees, public service, et cetera. And so, you know, what parade homes get built are kind of a function of that. And, and um. After quite a bit of debate within the board, several, several meetings, many hours by the time we got to the end of it. We landed on um, on a concept that we're gonna, we're gonna take for a test drive. Jordan is gonna kind of be our pioneer in twenty twenty six. He's building, like he said, a, a house that's on an infill lot with an ADU. Be super cool. I think, uh, are you still planning to use the garage to kind of do some of the storytelling that we're talking about? So he's gonna kind of set up the garage to be a little bit different than the usual vendor space that we have. And, and so we're excited about that ability to kind of to, tell the story a little bit in a more amplified way. But as this conversation evolved, we said, you know, let's, let's maybe create a little bit broader. Set of criteria around which builders can. Compete for this slot if they want to. And so we ended up landing on, uh, I think it's six criteria. I'll just kind of read through them real quick. So it's gonna be beyond sort of an infill conversation. So we've got a um category that's around affordability. One that's infill and or adaptive reuse. So, so it could be a remodel, you know, it could be like the Santa Clara Merc, you know, taking the commercial space and. And, and remodeling it or um for residential use. Water and or energy efficiency, land use and zoning responsiveness, housing choice. So that gets into sort of multi-generational stuff and non-traditional housing arrangements. And then a category for missing middle housing solutions, which like we said, are kind of everything starting from ADUs and duplexes up to courtyard housing. And so obviously, there's a lot of overlap between those categories. Um, but what we're hoping with this is that um it will encourage a couple of things. One, builders to, to. Think about innovating along this track. We, we love our parade homes. The, they're amazing. The craftsmen, the creativity, the design, that. The amount of work and thought and effort and care that goes into those is, is unmatched. This is kind of another channel, another way to apply some, some of that creative thinking that we see. And also we're hoping that it does sort of bring in the public sector of this. So, so one of the reasons I wanna bring Danielle in is cuz she's. So far ahead of the curve on this, the, the thing that you were just talking about, Jordan. But hopefully we could, this can be a little bit of a demonstration project and, and so. So builders that wanna do this can get sort of extra credit if they are able to enter into some sort of uh public, private relationship. To encourage cities to reconsider their, their zoning thing. You know, a lot of times what happens too is. You know, I've was told more than once, hey, to, I won't say which city, but to a city planner. I'd really love to do a project kind of like this and gave him the example. And they checked it out and the next meeting we had, they said, man, if you'd build that, I'd give you key of the city. I said, well, it's illegal here. And you know, so, so sometimes the, both the staff and the elected folks don't realize when impediments are in the, in, in the way of getting the outcomes that they want. And so we're hoping that this can help. And so we're hoping that this can help tease out some of those, those impediments and, and kind of collectively work towards solving them. So long explanation, I hate to monologue this much. Usually I don't like to talk this much. I usually like to listen in these things. But um, that's what we're working on and um, so maybe to kind of come back to that, do you, do you want to say more about kind of how you picture that garage space and how, um, in your mind?
One of the, one of the big things, um, and we've talked about it is parking, right? Like parking is the always the battle for. Yes, yes. Apparently everyone has like five cars.
Quick, quick insert real quick. This data is that about thirty percent of Washington County households have one car or no car at all.
Yeah.
That's wild. Yeah. And I would, I would like to even drill that down more and to see what that is in the city center.
Yeah.
Cause I bet it's even, it's even more or, you know, less cars, but um, on this one, so we actually, it's a really weird lot, which as you guys know, kind of like the weirder, the better for me, like I, I, I don't like it to be easy, I guess. Um, this actually has two accesses and it's not a corner lot. So almost has like an alleyway and I can kind of show you guys later, but it has an alleyway and that's where we have some off street parking for the ADU. And then we, on this one, we actually were able to attach the garage because it's not quite as skinny and long. So the main house has its own parking and has a garage. And then the ADU, we just actually did a carport, which I think you're going to see that type of design get really big, um, especially with just some sitter stuff and designs that are coming through.
Well, which is. Carports are super common, like in mid mod, like Eichler's and stuff like that. A lot of those were like one car garage and a, and a court.
Yeah. And the, the design on this home is a very like mid century modern. And not only because I love that design, but it's actually like a, you can get a lot of value with that design. You, um, it's kind of like the, the less is more. I have a friend who's a Ryan Grosskreis who's on board. He's a musician and he always says like in songwriting, you don't write a song and then say, what more can I add to it? It should be, what can I take out? And I have that same approach with design, like not, what more can we add to make this bigger, grander or whatever? It's like, what can we take out to, to make this better? That's what the mid century modern, and that's really what, what this, the kind of design on this parade is that, like what, not that we're wanting to build it cheap or bare bones, but we just want to make it really high efficient. Also have a lot of affordable type things that are in there, but it's going to have great design at the same time. It's a simplest and your house is very much that way. It is both of your guys, this is that, you know, has that modern flair, but not only do you like that, but I think it fits your lifestyle, like you guys are, you know, in a quote unquote, like in a, a simple life as far as like you do like to walk and go biking and you know, you don't need to have a golf simulator in your house or a bowling alley or a theater room or you know, you would rather walk to Dixie Bowl, which both of you could instead of having a bowling alley or walk to the birdie lounge, which is a small business here in town and hit the golf simulator there. So it's kind of the whole thought in, in, in that, um, kind of got off on a tangent about the parking, but uh, yeah, so it's, the ADU is detached. Um, we actually, we are below, I I built an even smaller ADU on this to kind of showcase.
What's the square footage?
It's four hundred square feet.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I can't wait to see it.
It's actually like has a loft and that's where the bedroom is. It has a loft and a closet upstairs and then living down below. So it's it's a really small ADU, but I kind of wanted to do that to showcase to people like look, we don't have to have this monstrosity in the back of the house. Like I think a big fear for a lot of people is that they're gonna build a thousand square foot house and they'll live in that. And then they're gonna build this quote unquote, the, the bad word duplex ADU in the back. And, and you know, then they turn this into a rental, but no, this is very much the opposite way. I see like a college student because it is a block away from the university, living in that in that ADU in the back. But yeah, it's really simple design. Um, it's a weird lot, but I think it's going to turn out really cool as far as the design and stuff like that. And my goal, and I know we've talked about this before when it was in, is like the kind of the educating purposes, we really would like to showcase, you know, in the parade, the garage, there's, there's spaces for businesses to you know, showcase their stuff or, you know, a mortgage company to show their product and everything like that. But I would really like to dedicate a, a section to this garage or this house that is purely educational for the people. And we also, we've talked about maybe opening up a day before or after the parade to, to public officials to have them come walk through it and you know.
It's a great idea.
Hopefully we don't offend them, but kind of educate them, right?
Conversation.
Have a conversation as far as like, look, here's the product. You can see it. And this is actually how we could have made this product even better.
No, I don't think it'll be offensive at all. I, I want to give Suba a shout out because I feel like Suba has done massive work when it comes to educating us as elected officials and it's extremely helpful. You guys are the ones on the ground. You're the ones building. You're the ones who are talking to people and understand what people need. Developers gets such a bad name. And as you know, like I probably get an email every day that's like the evil developers and and I always want to respond and say, well, who built your house? You know, were they so, because, because we have this symbiotic relationship and, you know, people have seen it's like people who hate police officers, you know, and you're like, okay, so you had a bad, you had a bad thing happen with a police officer. Police officers are good and we need them. They're an important part of our society. It's the same with developers. It's like I had a bad experience with a developer, so all developers are bad. No, like we desperately need good developers and I feel like Suba has done such a good job educating especially elected officials in regards to, you know, our codes are fluid. Our cities are fluid. They are ever changing.
Yeah.
To your, you know, when, when an elected official comes in and says, I don't want change, what you're basically saying is I want things to go backwards then. It's like when you leave a house empty, what happens? It doesn't sit, it breaks down.
Yeah.
It falls apart because it's, you know, it's a living organism. So our cities are living organisms, our relationships are living and constantly moving. And so that education for us as elected officials is a huge deal and it coming from Suba, the people who are on the ground, who are talking to people who are building the homes for the people who inhabit our space. It's incredibly important. And that's been my biggest fear. As we've worked so hard on some of these um, code changes, you see it just sitting. And it's because people aren't sure how to implement it.
Right.
So how do we take that next step? And actually implement these things that we know work, we know they work because we've seen them work in other places. So how do we implement them and encourage people to, you know, use these new tools that are available to them? So I think that education piece could be really valuable.
Yeah. Well, and I was saying this because this was a a very thought out process with, with Suba as far as like us adding this spot and everything like that. And um, I think there's this misconception that's like, oh, if you build a parade home, you're just making hand over fist money. And it's like, in some, yes, like it's also a massive gamble and I don't think people realize that developers, we, we will we gamble a lot to make a little, like millions of dollars to make maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars, which is still a lot of money. Like I'm not trying to be out of touch with reality, but it's like with this downtown parade here, I was telling, I was sitting in the board. I was just like, look, I would financially be so much smarter for me. I have a, a house that we're looking at building over in Hurricane, it's twelve thousand square feet. It's a beautiful, big custom home, has amazing views and everything like that. And I'm first reserve, we had someone drop out this year.
Get any of the way.
I would have done it either way. And I, the developers and I'm a small time developer, right? But that way I went this route because for the educational purpose, like that's the biggest tool we have in Suba is probably the parade for one, marketing, new innovative ideas, our homes, and that's why we went this way. Ultimately, I mean, I would love it to turn into where we get some more code changes and zoning changes. And then it does turn into more work for me, but that's where like the labor of love thing, like this isn't always us developers and public officials, we have hearts is what I'm getting at, like I know that you're not going to retire off of your city council wage by any means.
I'm lining my pockets with money from you, Jordan, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah. And I have too much money gambled out there uh, to pay any public officials out there. So that, that's not a thing. I think there's this huge massive misconception that like, we're like the federal government, we're big lobbyists and we're just lining pockets. And it's like, oh, man, it's so far from the truth, like that is definitely not the case, but yeah, I, I, I definitely think that a lot of the developers and a lot of the city officials and stuff like that, this has not come from like, oh, more houses just means more money for us. And it's like, yes, it does. It generates more tax dollars for us, which just provides a better way of life for everyone. That's what pays for parks and things like that, but.
Well, and it's not really different than most industries. The, you know, the, the high end stuff has bigger margins, the lower end stuff has thinner margins, but you do more volume.
Yeah.
And, and so, you know, in a, in a really healthy housing market, you know, and, and candidly, I think a, a lot of builders, if you could de-risk certain housing types, you can work on less money because part, part of what you're working on is that is the risk and the time factor that, that then becomes, you know, this, this other big X factor. If you could take out some of that uncertainty, some of that time, then you can work on if you, you know, you always take a, I mean, one of the most successful builders I, I've ever met, his saying was I'd, I'd always, I'll always take the fast nickel over the slow dime. And so builders will work for the lower margins if there's, if they can, if they can, if they can kind of afford to do it.
Most profitable builder in the country is, you know, D R Horton. And there's a lot of the times that they don't make a very, very, very little on a house, but they're moving product.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, as you guys know, I, I can and we'll talk to you guys all day about housing. Um, but appreciate you guys coming in. Maybe just to wrap up, I'd like to um, let you kind of have the last word, Danielle, just to see if you have any other feedback or response to some of what we're working on or the topic generally that we can, that we could take forward.
I just think um, at the end of the day, like I brought up at the beginning, we all live here. Um, this place is important to all of us. It's, it's not just a project, it's our lives.
Yeah.
And so I think that's why people get so passionate, either for or against whatever is happening in our city. So education to me is the thing that changes minds. So um, I heard something the other day that said, you know, if you're, if you're working in a city and you want people to understand like why parks matter, you can't just say parks matter. You have to show them and then you have to show them again, and then you have to show them again. And their number was like eleven. I don't know where they got that number. About on the eleventh time that you've shown them, people say, ah, yes, these parks really matter. So I think that education, repetition, conversations like this where we're sharing again and again and again, why we care about this community, why it matters, why we want quality of life for ourselves and our kids and our grandkids and whoever else decides to come here. That's why we're doing what we're doing, in my opinion. It's why I ran for office. I mean, it's a semi miserable place to be at times, you know, I mean, it's not really a comfortable space, but I just love St. George and I know you two well enough to know you're the same. You are really passionate about this space. I think that's why we have all become friends and why we talk is because we feel a strong passion for like, let's make this a great place. And how do we do that? We do that by creating spaces that are livable and create quality of life for people. So um, I would encourage Suba members to continue to Jordan's point, talking to your elected officials. It's really important. It makes a huge difference. When builders call or even have the people who they built homes for call and say like, you know, this is a challenge we're facing. It was hard for us. It took us this many months to get our home done because you know, and this is what could change that for us. And especially if they can do it in a way that is not super confrontational, but that's more like collaborative. Then I see us getting things done. I mean, the fact that we had a conversation about changing ADUs, the fact that we allow ADUs, like these are, we've, we've made massive strides and we continue to do so. Yeah.
No, it's really well said. Again, thanks again, guys. Really appreciate you guys coming in and for everybody that tuned in, thanks for listening to the show. We hope you'll uh, uh, subscribe so you don't miss an episode and we'll see you in the next one.